The most honourable members of our society and the Family Homes Fund, our social housing scheme. As many of you are undoubtedly aware, 200,000 jobs were created in the first phase of the Npower Volunteers Programme. This is perhaps the highest number of jobs that have been created in one fell swoop by any government in the history of our country. Some 300,000 jobs are next in line to bring the total to the promise of 500,000 jobs. These jobs benefit mostly the youths who will be engaged in the areas of education, health and agriculture. Also, the homegrown school feeding has taken off in three states already, Anambra, Kaduna and Oshun States. It has now been scaled up to 11 of the 18 states designated for the first phase. Already, some 25,000 cooks have been trained in nine states. Concerning the cash, conditional cash transfer, the data for the beneficiaries in nine states are now ready and the payment process for those states are already in top gear. For the micro credit scheme, more than 1 million Nigerians are set to get loans at very low interest rates through the Bank of Industry. The loans range from 20,000 to 20,000 per beneficiary. The pilot scheme is taking place in eight states and here in the federal capital territory. There's more good news. In order to sustain this important social investment programme, the 500 billion naira for the programme has been retained in the 2017 budget, which was recently presented to the National Assembly by Mr President. On our own part, at the Ministry of Information and Culture, we are leveraging on the creative industry, which is youth-driven, to create jobs and unleash the huge potentials of our youths. We have signed a memorandum of understanding with the Tony Alumeli Foundation and the British Council to train festival managers, build the capacity of our youths and lead the creative industry with the business world. Our imminent transition from analog to digital broadcasting is set to create 1 million jobs in three years, with most of these jobs going to the youths. These jobs are already being created as we speak. This is because as the digital switch-over trend arrives in Abuja this Thursday, the 22nd of December, and then proceeds to other parts of the country, we need lots of installers, retailers, repair technicians and marketers for the set-top boxes or decoders that will be required to meet the demand of 24 million TV households. We will also need a huge content of content which you, our talented youths, will be required to provide. It is the dawn of a new era for the creative mind and technically savvy. The opportunities are limitless. Let me also say that the administration's ongoing massive investment in infrastructure, especially power, road and railways, will largely benefit our youths. The fight against corruption will ensure that funds meant for the common good are not salted away by a few fat cats but spent for the purpose they are meant for, the benefit of all Nigerians, including the youths. Honourable Ministers, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, this government is unrelenting its efforts to ease the hardship in the land, especially using unemployment brought about by years of poor or lack of planning, profligacy, mismanagement of funds, massive corruption and lack of investment in social investment programmes. We did not create today's hardship, but we are resolved to end it and make life more abundant for our people. There's no question about that. All we ask is your undailed support. We have no doubt that working with you will achieve our set goals. I will now yield the podium to the panelists, my fellow honourable ministers, who are here to make their five-minute opening statements each, after which it will be the turn of the youths to ask them questions. I thank you most sincerely for your kind attention. May I now call on the Honourable Minister of Agriculture to make his opening statement? Thank you very much.
Honourable Ministers, distinguished ladies and gentlemen, young Nigerians. The good news I have for you is that there is a fortune, a huge fortune lying somewhere for you to inherit immediately. It's a fortune of 22 billion dollars per annum. That fortune is in food. In doing so, we shall cut down on imports and transfer the money we send to bring in rice, sugar, milk, tomato paste, honey, salt, cookies and biscuits, toothpicks. That money belongs to you, not to Thailand, China, India, the United States or Europe. Welcome to that fortune.
Good morning. I'd like to start by saying that Nigeria is coming out of one of the most difficult periods that we've seen economically. And a lot has been said about oil. And I'd like to just start by explaining what's happened and how we're solving it. We used to really get oil, our oil was selling for as high as 110. At one stage, it went down to 28. So if you think about that, that's like somebody who was earning 110,000 naira suddenly getting 28,000 a month. Definitely, there are going to be problems in that home. And that's really what Nigeria has been going through. What we've tried to do, or what we intend to do, is to make Nigeria's economy more resilient so that oil price doesn't hit us the way it has hit us. And what are the things that we need to do to do that? One, of course, we need to stop wastage of money to make sure that every, the little money we have is spent on the right things. And the things that will create jobs is largely infrastructure. And I know that my colleague will speak a lot about infrastructure, but let me explain why infrastructure is important. Currently, if there are two people in two different countries, let's say Vietnam and Nigeria, with the same talent, the one in Vietnam has an inbuilt advantage over the one in Nigeria. And the difference is infrastructure. It costs so much to do business in Nigeria. It costs so much to transport goods. You have to run a generator, you have to have your own borehole. So even when people have creative ideas that could make jobs for themselves or for others, they're unable to take advantage. And in fact, we end up importing things which we could produce here. So once we sort out our infrastructure, we'll be able to create jobs for the future. And it's so important because we're 170 million people. We talk about oil. Oil really is not that important to us because we only produce 2.2 million barrels a day. And we are 170 million. Saudi Arabia produces 10 million barrels of oil a day, they're 30 million. The Kuwaitis produce 3 million barrels of oil a day and they're just 3 million in population. So we can't afford to rely on oil. We have to do all those things that the Minister of Agriculture was talking about. We must feed ourselves, we must clothe ourselves, we must create that enabling infrastructure that will enable the economy to grow outside of oil. And that's really what this government is focused on. And if we do that, this economy can compete. If we have rail, we can move products from Kano to Lagos, we can move from Kogi to Lagos, we can move from Katsina to Lagos, we can move from Akwaibomb to Lagos, we can even export. The problem we have at the moment is most of our produce rots because you can't, we can't preserve it or we can't move it, we can't process it. And that is depriving us of jobs. So what we're trying to do is spend our money on the things that will grow this economy so that we will begin to create jobs, we'll begin to substitute the things we've been importing with Nigerian-made products that create Nigerian jobs and even export to other countries, which we have the capability to do. And this government, this administration is doing that. It has been a very difficult time. We believe that we're getting out of the most difficult period and moving into where you'll begin to see the impact of what we're doing and particularly the investments in infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you. Can I call on the Honourable Minister of Labour and Employment, please?
My fellow honourable ministers and distinguished participants of this town hall meeting, good morning to everybody. My Ministry, Ministry of Labour and Employment. You know what we do in labour. Labour is for arbitration, looking into dispute conciliation and making sure that there's an equitable medium for the employer and employees. We also have a mandate to direct job creation or coordinate job creation activities because job creation is everybody's business. It's not a business of my ministry alone, but we do the coordination. And for now, because of where we found ourselves due to the profligacy of the past and not saving for the rainy day, our economy slid into recession. One of the major indices of an economy in recession is, apart from inflation, rise in unemployment. So we've decided to cover programmes in this government to fight unemployment, which figures, you know, unfortunately risen to an all-time high of 13%. And in doing this, we decided that we have to first make sure that we hold on to the jobs we have and that people are not thrown into the market, that's the labour market. So we convened an oil and gas summit where we will discuss with the employers. Of course, you know that the IOC, that's the International Oil Companies, were worst hit by the slide in the price of oil and even the volume because they suffered the destructions in the Niger Delta. And we told them that they can go up and cut from the big executives so that we can maintain the workforce number. Of course, they cooperated with us and the cuts is not as much as we anticipated, even though the unions, the oil unions are complaining bitterly that, but it could have been worse. Same goes for the banks. The banks decided to lay off people and put them into the army pool of unemployed. Of course, we resisted as a government because it's our mandate to make sure that we give our people jobs and make them comfortable. And I cannot also say that it's not what they anticipated. We asked that they cut down their expenses in terms of what they spend in running the bank activities and make sure that people retain their jobs. The Honourable Minister of Information have talked about the Npower Programme. The Npower Programme is designed to take 500 persons, 500,000, sorry, persons. We've done 200,000, but we're doing a rollover. So by January, February, we will take on the second batch. Out of the 200, we have not done 50,000, which is for Nbuild. That one is a process ongoing because of the caliber of people that are in that group. These people are people who didn't go to universities and tertiary institutions. Some of them didn't even have all-level schools at, so we want to get them on board. But those are the people you have in Boko Haram and IPo and Avengers. When we give them jobs, they will not be out there. My brother Minister Power and Woks will talk about what they're doing in Rose. It's a part of creating jobs. The people who go out to the Rose to build the Rose, people are Nigerians. And the contractors have given estimates of what they can do in terms of employment of people. Same goes for railways. The railways that we're trying to get on for the country, the one running from Lagos to Kaduna and the one running from Lagos to Benin to Potacot, through Kalaba, all will create jobs for our people. So I think 2017 will be a better year than what we have this year. And God, thank you.
Youth and sports, please make your presentation.
Fellow colleagues, distinguished future leaders. Work for us in the Ministry of Youth and Sports Development. The ministry was created in 2015 as a result of the merger of the then Ministry of Sports with the Ministry of Youth. Now, our major mandate is to focus on the issue of youth development and sports. And in the area of youth development, we are guided by the National Youth Policy of 2009, which has 18 thematic issues. Most of the issues are interrelated with what other ministries are doing. So we interface and engage at different levels of implementation. Well, we have been able to modestly record progress in the ministry. First, we appreciated the fact that there is a need for a change in narratives because of the wide gap that existed between the youth and the leadership, which resulted into the present situation of unemployment, lack of job and sometimes frustration of the young people. And so we have deliberately implemented certain policies that augmented this. And some of the policies include, one, reviewing the national youth policy, which was due for this year. We had a zero budget situation and therefore we had to think out of the box to engage our partners and those will collaborate on relevant youth issues. So we had a national stakeholders meeting this year and the national youth policy is being reviewed. We also in 2015 December, trained 211 young people drawn from all over the Federation in two places, Katsina and Ogun. And they were training agro allied services. These young people, after their training, are also being monitored by the ministry to ensure that they take off properly. After the training, we gave them some tokens to assist them to take off. We also had inaugurated the National Youth Parliament. The National Youth Parliament is a leadership training programme where young people are elected from the 109 senatorial districts in Nigeria. They are now inaugurated and are trained in the act of lawmaking. The current National Youth Parliament is in progress. And they have been sitting, they do sit at the National Assembly because it's a collaboration between the ministry and the National Assembly. They do sit in the National Assembly, make laws that they refer to the ministry on issues they feel the Nigerian youths will deserve government attention. Now, these resolutions, when passed, guide the ministry in formulating issues that border on contemporary youth question. We also had held a roundtable, African Roundtable Conference with young people chosen to come around and discuss issues of development that affect the youths. Today, as I'm talking, there are also 10 young people that have been elected that are participating in a youth empowerment programme in Banjul. There's so many other things that we have been doing, which is a product of the out-of-the-box approach we adopted. Although we have secured the intervention of the president to augment our this year's budget, which has not yet been released. In the areas of sport, we have recorded considerable progress because we had our under-17, the Dream Team that qualified as African champions and went to Olympic Rio, came back with a bronze medal. And then our participation in Rio, we had modest achievements which stand in favour of Nigeria. We had for the first time in the history of this country, a Nigerian who for the first time in Africa qualified to quarterfinals in table tennis, Haruna Kadri. That to me is an achievement. Then we also had a young Nigerian who was going to Olympic for the first time in Kenyatta. She went as far as semifinals. And that also was the first time an African ever in the history of that sport went to that stage. Then we have our Paralympians, a mindset and then disengage themselves and prepare their minds to assumption of responsibility because we cannot live here forever. We will soon quit the stage and hand over to you people. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. It's my pleasure to please call on the Honourable Minister of State for body and national planning. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honourable Minister. My colleagues, distinguished guests, ladies and gentlemen. Our country is in a recession. The government is determined to take this country out of recession and back to the path of growth. In doing this, we're using the National Economic Recovery and Growth Plan, which is going to be concluded in January, as well as the 2017 budget to pull our country out of recession. The 2015 budget, 17 budget is designed to expand partnership between the public sector and the private sector, using government funds to leverage, to act as a catalyst, to attract more private sector resources that will be applied to the growth that we need. The objectives of the budget include, as in 2016, critical focus on development of infrastructure projects such as roads, rail, power, ICT. This is so that we will have very quick and positive effect on the economy. We also made provisions in the 2017 budget of funds that will be utilized to develop special economic zones and industrial parks. This will act as vehicles for acceleration of domestic activity, for innovation, for wealth creation as well as for job creation. And of course, the greater beneficiary of this job creation will be the youths. We have made significant provisions for increased development of the agricultural sector as well as the mining sector. It is important for us to continue to ensure food security and to create a platform for increased agricultural production and agro businesses. We realise that we cannot attract youths to the agricultural business the way agriculture is now. So we must modernise the agricultural space so that youths can be encouraged to take advantage of the 22 billion dollars that the Ministry of Agriculture says is out there for youths to latch on to and take part of the business away from the countries where we have been importing foods to Nigeria. We also have made a specific provision for establishment of a housing fund. This is a mortgage system that will help to deepen housing availability on the country. The good part of this is that there will be a lot of construction activity and that means also there will be a lot of jobs that will be available for our youths. We have made provisions to ensure that the Bank of Agriculture, the Bank of Industry and the Development Bank will increase their capacity to provide small, medium-scale enterprises with loans to enhance their businesses. And to this effect, this two, the Bank of Agriculture and Bank of Industry are being recapitalized and the provision for the capitalization of these two banks are provided for in the 2017 budget proposal. We also have, like in 2006, made a provision of 500 billion for the social safety needs, which have been so eloquently explained by the Honourable Minister of Information. But let me state here that the performance of the 2016 budgetary provision for the social safety need has been very, very low. And the reason for this is that there was a need to do a lot of planning, to identify the right people that will benefit from these programmes, to enumerate them, to create platforms to ensure that the funds are going to the right beneficiaries. All of this work has been done. So it means in 2017, all we have to do is to continue to disball funds and increase the size and the scale of the people that have been engaged in the first instance. The Ministry of Budget and National Planning has a mandate to prepare short, medium and long-term plans for the economy and we have continued to do that. The Nigerian Economic Recovery and Growth Plan is at its final stages of completion and we welcome inputs especially from the youths before it is completed so that your thoughts and your views are also taken along in this medium-term plan.
Thank you very much, ma'am. May I call on the Honourable Minister of Power, Works and Housing? Thank you.
Good morning. Good morning. Ah, ah. Compliments of the season to all of you. I think the place to start is first to remind myself that I am 53 years old, so I don't qualify to be a youth anymore. And so do some of my colleagues. They don't qualify to be youths anymore. Some are quite more youthful. But you see, that is not the point. The point really is that as un-youthful as I am, there's a lot of story and history there. And for the very, very young people, the first thing I'd like to say to you is don't despair. Don't despair. There is hope and there is light at the end of the tunnel. I have seen Nigeria like this before, even worse. And I can tell you the story. Between 1979, when I was 16, I couldn't vote then, and 1983, Nigeria had a lot of money, reserves. There was nothing we couldn't... There was nothing we couldn't buy. By 1983 and 1984, the money was gone. We had spent it on all sorts of drinks. Helgovine, all sorts of canned drinks, Littard Nigeria, imported. That's when we started importing rice. We didn't used to import rice before. So if you just got an import license for rice, without importing anything, you were a millionaire immediately. Then the bubble busts. So in 1984, I was 21. So my contact with recession was that it was difficult to find sugar. It was difficult to find milk. That's what all the economics and all of those things we're learning in class, it makes sense to me. But recession just meant there was no sugar. And there was no milk. Then all those canned drinks suddenly disappeared as if somebody just came to clear them. And then by 1985, in my university, recession meant that we couldn't run the school cafeteria again. We used to eat a meal at fifty kobo. Eggs, coffee, and tea. In this country, chicken at lunch, fifty kobo per meal. So to feed as a student was 45 naira a month, three meals. So that disappeared. But you know what? Nigeria didn't disappear. But that event happened as a result of things that we did and failed to do, and also things that we couldn't really control. Global oil and global economic slum, which is exactly almost what is happening again today. Things that we can control and things that we can't control. By the time we left university, that was when the term "I'm checking out" became very popular. The Andrews, they left. But I remained in this country. I didn't go anywhere. I believed so much in the promise of this country. But I'd never thought that I would sit here as a minister. But I remained. I believed, and I worked hard. So I want to say to you, don't lose faith. The promise of this country will come true to pass in all your lives. And it's not a prayer. Don't pray. I don't believe in it. Pray in your house. Once we come here, we are coming to talk about work. What does recession mean? Recession means that we have stopped producing. We are having negative growth. It means that we must roll up our sleeves and work very hard to get back to growth. That is why, in presenting the budget, the president targeted the budget of recovery and growth. He has set all the parameters to recover. He has set all the parameters for growth. But only the president can't recover the economy. Only the president can grow back the economy. It is the sum total of what all of us do that the National Bureau of Statistics will record, and that is when the numbers come out, is either a plus or a minus. So everybody here, and those who are watching us at home, must understand that we are at the time when we must work our hardest. And I don't pretend that it is easy. I don't assume that people are not facing difficult times. I am mindful of it. I see it up close. I know those who are struggling to pay rent, those who are struggling to pay fees, those who have withdrawn children from school. I have relations, but I know that we can turn this corner together. Now, how does my ministry impact here? In my earlier addresses, I had shared with you the realities that we met with our contractors. For upwards of two to three years, most of the contractors in power and in works had not been paid. Not a lot was going on. We're doing more PPPs in housing. That's what I meant. So as contractors start losing income, the net effect is that they start shedding jobs. So the first thing that we have started to do first is to recover those lost jobs by starting to pay contractors. The first disbursements, I think, were made in June. The second disbursements were made between October and November. Now, again, in assessing where we are, let us remember also that, as ministers, we have spent, today is 20th of December, so it means we have spent one year, one month, and nine days in office as ministers. During that period, we have implemented our budget for roughly seven months. And in seven months, we have quarter by quarter, and thanks to the Minister of Finance and Minister for Budget, been able to put contractors back to work, contractors who haven't worked for three years. Those are the first steps to recovery, getting those who have lost their jobs back to work. And I am optimistic that if what I see, what is being reported to me, and we are not by any means near where we want to be yet, but if what I've seen in the first seven months of implementing a budget is any sign at all, recovery is on the way. Results will begin to manifest much more forcefully next year. And this is where, I think, young people have an even bigger stake and a bigger role. The more money that this nation earns, the more you will feel it in the quality of your infrastructure, in roads being completed, electricity installations being expanded, liabilities in the electricity sector, and there are quite a number of sizable liabilities there that has to be paid off. As money moves around, if I pay A, A then can buy his sugar and milk. The sugar and milk seller can pay for her children's school fees. The school fees we pay salary. That's how money moves around an economy. So it is important for all of us, especially those who are sabotaging this economy, breaking pipelines, that this is the time to stop, if we must recover. Because the price of oil is going to go up. But we will not benefit from it if we can't produce. And that's why I talked about working hard and producing. Because that is still a major source of our income. It is also a major source of our foreign exchange. If we sell more oil, the pressure on the dollar tonara will also reduce. And as it reduces, all of us will begin to see the benefits. So I see hope, I see recovery ahead in 2017, and I urge you not to lose hope. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Honorable Ministers, and thank you very much, the audience. I think it's now time for us to take questions from you. And for us, this is the most important part of this procedure. Because we believe that not only must you hear from us, we must also hear from you and take back to government your views. Between me and Mr. Berion, we are going to coordinate the answer, the question-answer session. You will identify yourself, which youth organization or medium you represent, and then you ask your question. Please make your questions direct, brief, and not too complicated. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Honorable Minister. We have microphones around you, but we're going to be very orderly about it. And I'm happy that the Honorable Minister of Power, Works, and Housing ended this interaction on a very hopeful note. And so we'll start with you at the back. Your hand is up there. There's a microphone close to you. So we'll do you one. There's a man wearing white just behind the camera. You are two. The man in front there, you are three. You, there, you are four. Let's take it from there.
Good morning, sir. My name is Juliana. I write for Sun newspapers. The Minister of Youth and Sports, I want to be sure I heard you right when you said the budget for youth has not been released for this year. Does that demonstrate the priority this government places on the youth if the budget was not released to do anything for them this year? Thank you.
Thank you. Number two.
Good morning, and I want to appreciate this town hall meeting. My name is Usman Okwesonde. I am the president, Igala Youth Association in Kujé. Now, my question is, taking it up from the Honorable Minister of Power, I think the Igala youth, we have already rolled our sleeve ready to work for recovery and growth. And the $22 billion era, which the Honorable Minister of Agriculture said, I want to know, how can we assess this for agricultural production? Because the minister was very brief and straight to the point. How can we, youths, assess those infrastructure? And also for land also, access to land where we can do agriculture especially? How can we also have access to source land so that as we roll our sleeve, we can have what to do? Thank you very much.
Thank you, especially you from Igala land. Okay, please, the microphone, number three. Number four, get ready.
Dear Honorable Ministers, my colleague, fellow colleagues, youth, ladies and gentlemen. I'm Abdul Wahav Moussa from FCT Coalition of Indigenous. Sir, I do understand our town hall meeting topic is all about the economy, which, to me, my little understanding is economic and politics, we are going hand in hand. The economic stabilizes politics, and as well, politics control economy. And if I'm not mistaken, sir, you are all employers of politics. Sir, to some extent, if I may say, going to the constitutional provision, FCT is being marginalized to some extent. We have been having just six area council. We are having just two constituencies and one senatorial district. Where if, if, sir, will, to some extent, been given the opportunity to provide more area council, more constituency, and senatorial district, I guess the youth will be employed to some extent. And secondly, sir, sequel to the coming of FCT here in Abuja, our farmland have been taken away and given to the wealthy Nigerians, or let me say elite, if I may put it that way. We have no place to farm. Again, this recession, to us, has been existing a long time ago, and now it's worse. And again, sir. And again, sir, here before me, Minister of Agriculture, the government comes with an ideology of diversifying the economy. If we are to diversify our own economy in FCT here, we don't know how we are going to put it right. Because there are no land for that at all. And we are still left with nothing doing. We have no mine, no economics. We don't have anything to do for ourselves. Please, sir, if there is anything you can do about it, I think this government is working, we know. But let the government also look into our problem. Lastly, sir, the issue of our mayoral status. We've been agitating for this a long time ago, but it's been put under the carpet. Now we heard that it has passed, I think, two or three step in the national assembly. It has passed the last stage. Now we are waiting for presidential assent. Please, sir, if there is anything you can do about it. I'm a future minister, but I cannot be there. Sir, I cannot be there without passing a process. We are in a democracy, and they say it's a system of government in which all qualified adult citizens are allowed to share the same supreme power, directly or indirectly, sir. So if we are allowed to elect our mayor, there will also be mayoral assembly. Maybe I might be there, and tomorrow I'll be a minister. Thank you, sir.
I admire your ambition, my brother. Number four.
Thank you. Thank you, Honorable Ministers and fellow youth. My name is Abel Inalegu Inosan. I'm a trained microbiologist, now working as a meta-fabricator, meaning I am aware, because I believe change begins with me. I have a question each for the Honorable Minister of Agriculture, Honorable Minister of Youth and Sport Development, and Honorable Minister of Housing, Power, and Works. My first question goes to Honorable Minister of Agriculture. I am from Benue State. I'm the president of Idoma Youth Association, Galadimawa Village, and Idoma, to be precise. And each time I visit home and I see the rate of wastages in our agricultural produce, it pains my heart when I see the rate of fruits that are wasted there. And I heard on news that importation of fruit juice will be stopped from next year. I want to ask, is there any plan on ground for the processing of agricultural produce in the middle belt? That is my question to the Honorable Minister of Agriculture. Then to the Honorable Minister of Youth. He talked about youths that are elected from all the senatorial districts to represent youths in Nigeria. And that 10 of our youths have been elected and are being trained overseas now. I want to ask, what is the medium, or what media, or what platform, from what platform is the election heard? When is it heard? And what publicity was given to it? Because I believe so many youths here are not aware of the time and where the elections are held. Then, finally, to the Honorable Minister of Power, Housing, and Works, a man I respect so much from a distance because of what he did in Lagos. I want to ask, sir, because I watched on television when the privatization of electricity was signed in Nigeria by the last administration. There was an agreement that the DISCOs, which is the distribution companies, will give each and every household free prepaid meters. I live in Galadimawa Village today, and I can tell you that I am overbilled because of estimated billing. Sir, is anything being done for us to have access to the prepaid meters? Thank you, and that's my question.
Thank you very much. So we'll take it back to the ministers as affected, then we'll take a new set of questions.
Thank you very much. I think the questions start with the young lady who would want to know what happened to, you know, to clear the air, whether really the Minister for Youth and Sport Development actually said there was no budget in 2016. I think that is, he would take that. And then the young man from Igala Land would want the Minister of Agriculture to know how they can access the $22 billion which is waiting outside for the youth in agriculture. And also, how can they have access to land? The future minister from...
FCT.
FCT. He says FCT is marginalized. And he raised the issue of also how the farmland has been, in FCT, has been taken over and allocated to the elites, and how will they farm? And I think that question also goes to the Honorable Minister of Agriculture. Of course, the issue of the status of FCT and its marginalization, and the issue of mayoral state, I think, will be taken over by the Honorable Minister of Power, Works, and Housing. I think be taken over by the Honorable Minister of Power, Works and Housing. The last question, it's Innocent, that's the microbiologist, turned meta-fabricator. And who is very proud of what he's doing. Thank you very much. I think he wants, he has three questions. One for the Minister of Agriculture. He is concerned about the wasted of our produce, especially where it comes from. And he wants to know whether they set any plan to have a processing plant for fruits in the middle belt. If to the Minister of Youth, he wants to know where and when, and what was the modality for the election of the Youth Parliament. And finally, he would want the Minister of
Power.
Power, Works and Housing to explain why they don't have free prepaid meters. Prepaid meters, and why they are overbuilt, and what can be done to rectify the situation. So I start with Honorable Minister for Youth and Sports. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. The first question has to do with the budget of the ministry in 2016. Well, because of the challenges that we earlier had with the 2016 budget, we ended up with a situation of the zero budget. But we had to now approach the president, who graciously approves our budget as proposed in the 2016 budget, pending when we will have a supplementary budget. So that is a process that is ongoing. But when we'll have the funds, maybe we'll do other things. But like I said, we have to think out of the box because even with that, we will still have to do something for the youth. We've been engaging our partners, who have also been very, very active. The second issue is about the National Youth Parliament. Well, we came on board while the National Youth Parliament was already elected. So what we basically do was to inaugurate it. But then the question is, what is the modality? The modality basically is that members are elected, the election is conducted by the various states' governments, who now forward the names through their various ministries of youth and sports development. But carefully going through the process, we discovered that there is a need for the parliament to be fully democratized. Because what we observed was that these names were nominated or handpicked by the various state governments and then sent to us. So we intend to have reform because it's a democratic institution. And so anybody representing the people should have a mandate from the people to represent them against the background of what we had on ground. So we inherited it, but of course, we are going to embark on reforms. Because the next parliament will be democratically elected. And anybody who wants to represent the people must secure the mandate and the consent of the people to represent them. So those interested are now aware. Get ready. At the next National Youth Parliament, it is going to be democratic. The second question has to do about these ten young people that are currently in Abidjan training. What were the modalities employed in selecting them? The process is very simple. What we do is, when we have such opportunities, we consider areas with which they had not been favored, maybe in the past nominations. Then we write the various state governments to nominate people and send. Because the Ministry of Youth and Sport Development also have ministries in the state where we interface on different issues. So that basically was the method we used in getting the ten young people. And permit me to still conclude that indeed, listening from the interaction with the youth today and some of the submissions, of course, I am more pleased to listen. This now gives the impression of how young people appreciate governance. And just like the Minister of Power had stated, the youth basically will need to sit up and take the bull by the horn. Because the challenges of today will not live for us, live with us forever. So I think this is my reaction to this question.
Go to the, quickly to the issue of the FCT, his constitutional status, and before we go to, and the issue of the mayoral status, before we go to the issue of who took away their land. And I think the Honorable Minister for Labor and Employment, who was on the, up to 2011 in the upper chambers of the National Assembly, seems to know a lot about the bearish agitation by the FCT community to change their constitutional status. And he will tell us how far, how far they've gone with the issue of upgrading the status of the FCT. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Honorable Minister of Information. Yeah, the future Minister, Abdul Wahab. I was in the seventh senate of the National Assembly. That's why my colleague asked me to explain a little bit. I also know some workings ongoing now in the eighth senate about the constitutional amendment process they have undertaken. In the seventh senate, we had, as per the constitution of the Federal Republic of Nigeria, in situ now, we had a senator representing the sixth area council. And then we had two House of Reps for the other federal seats. And that is what the constitution provides for now. Especially in terms of delineation of senatorial seats and federal constituencies by INEC. And luckily for you people, you have very vibrant National Assembly members. In the seventh senate, Senator Philip Aduda represented FCT. And we're together in the Constitutional Amendment Committee. And he pushed very hard for FCT to have a mayoral status. Unfortunately, we started our constitutional amendment late in the seventh senate. And by the time we did some tinkering with the constitution and sent the amendments to the then-president Jonathan for his assent, there were certain areas that were not palatable to the executive. But because it came as one bill, they found it difficult to touch any portion of the bill. Because it was one composite bill. So I believe that this eighth senate gives you people a very big opportunity for the amendment of the constitution, because it must be a constitutional amendment. And the constitutional amendment is a very tortuous journey. Because when it finishes in the National Assembly here, it has to go down to the states. And it requires two-thirds of the 36 states, which 24 states, to agree to whatever is being amended before it is now passed again by the National Assembly and sent to the president for his assent. So even in this edition that's ongoing now, it's not true that it has passed through the senate and is now waiting for President Bouari to assent, no. It has not even started the major journey. They are now on what you can call public hearing. And amending the relevant areas and bringing it to the knowledge of the senate and the House of Reps. So you people need to do a lot of lobbying. You talk that the economy and politics go together, yes. The politics and the economy, you are now to do the politics of affecting a mayoral status and affecting that FCT should enjoy the status of the 37 states of Nigeria. So your House of Rep members and your senator, you have to go and support them now. And follow them the whole hog in getting this amended. Otherwise, the constitution doesn't even provide for a 37th minister. So you are dreaming of being a minister who just fizzles out if that constitution is not amended. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I think the Honorable Minister of Agriculture and Natural Resources will have to take the next question. One, how can the youth take advantage of the 22 billion dollars out there in the agricultural sector? And two, how do the people of the FCT, they have complained that there is no way they can farm because you have taken away their land? Honorable Minister of Agriculture, sir.
My dear colleagues, our beloved youths, let me deal with the FCT issue very quickly. The people of the FCT definitely have a case. And it is something that has been in discussion for a long time. But we, like the Minister of Labor said, the lobbying has to continue. You have sympathizers who will join hands with you in making the case. But let me quickly say this. All of FCT was taken from Niger, Kaduna, Platu and Cebi, I mean, and the Kogi States. The business of this new capital began with Yakubu Gobon in 1974. It was overthrown in 75. The Murutala Obasanjo regime continued with their idea because Lagos was becoming too congested. So they came and took lands from here and there in what they felt was a central part of Nigeria to allow access to everybody. Now, it has affected indigenous here because, like you say, you don't have a governor. And you need to be represented more strongly. So lobbying will be necessary. But let me now quickly add. The FCT covers 8,500 square kilometers. It is 15 times the country called Singapore. It is half the size of Ogum State. It is larger than several states. So to say that there is no land left is not true. You have plenty of land. Singapore is a country of 650 square kilometers. FCT is 8,500 square kilometers. So FCT is 15 times bigger than the country called Singapore. I need, young people, I know history is no longer taught. But let me remind you of what a Roman politician and philosopher said once. His name was Cicero. He said, "Any society that neglects its history will be a society of children forever." History, please, history, our own history. We need to keep remembering how things happened and why. Most of this thing was done under military, the military regimes, and therefore, civil opinion wasn't always sought. They came by decrees, and there wasn't much anybody could do. But FCT does have a case. Someday, through lobbying, if not a governor, at least a mayor should exist so that those opportunities the young man mentioned can be provided for the people of FCT. They are indigenous to this soil, and therefore, they have legal rights and moral rights. Nobody is denying that. But as for land for agriculture, there is plenty of land. Right now, we have a program with the Asosavious Group of 15,000 hectares of farmland in Quali. We are partnering with them to start clearing land from the middle of January. We have mobilized eight heavy bulldozers to do the work. There are 12 rivers and streams there. We're going to dam them. So any young person, indigenous especially, who wants to farm there will have access not only to cleared land, but to water for irrigation. And when we begin the project, we'll invite you again, maybe we'll go in about five or six or 10 buses among the young people for us to go and see what this program is going to look like. It will be one of the largest agricultural estates in the world. Now, a young man asked a gentleman from Igala. How do you access this huge fortune of 22 billion dollars by going into agriculture? Why, like the Minister of Works said, did we go into something as ridiculous as a task force for the importation of rice as far back as 1982? I was a cabinet minister. I was 34 years old. And I asked this question. I asked this question. Why, why a task force for importing rice, not for producing rice? And I was told, oh, you are just coming from the university. You are too young. You don't understand. And that's how we began importing rice, until the bill got to 5 million dollars a day. 5 million US dollars a day for shipping rice in from Thailand and more recently, Vietnam and India. Shiploads. And like he said, we became very proud of it. Every dime we earned from oil went back to sustain other economies and create jobs, which many of you younger people have had to go abroad in search of and not been able to find. About six months ago, a young Nigerian was killed on the streets of India. You know his fault? He was pushing a wheelbarrow. An Indian youth killed him because he was taking their job. A wheelbarrow. They lynched him on the streets. If you go to Guangzhou in China, there are 5,000 Nigerians in prison. They call them black monkeys. If you go to Brazil, there are close to 300 Nigerians in jail in Sao Paulo. I was in Thailand not too long ago. A story came out about what some Nigerian youth did to another Nigerian. He had ingested drugs, and he was dying. Nine other Nigerians did some terrible thing to him and took out the drugs from his stomach. They were arrested. Front page headline everywhere. Why do we have to go out there in search of jobs which exist here? Why do we transfer our wealth to sustain other economies, bringing poverty, unemployment and anger into our own society? Because we were lured into this economic practice. And we unfortunately were not strong enough to resist it. I'm talking about the structural adjustment which was forced on Africa in 1986. That's when we started devaluing our currency every week at the so-called auction. Every week, the naira got weaker. I was in Hong Kong with a friend. When we phoned him and they said the auction began that day, 3 naira to $1. And I said to him, this is the beginning of Nigeria's journey to disaster. What we are in now was going to come anyway, whichever government was in power, because we run out of cash. They've taken all our foreign exchange. Now I have, I have prime ministers flying in from foreign countries to meet me here, saying to me they don't like the idea that Nigeria is no longer importing stock fish. Why have we stopped? We are spoiling their economies. You go to Dubai, they are complaining the shops have closed. You go to Dubai, they are complaining the shops have closed because Nigerians are no longer shopping. All that wealth, the twenty two billion dollars, belongs to you. And I'm saying so because if you create these things and feed yourselves, the money circulates here. Imagine if every Nigerian was to eat only five hundred naira worth of food per day, times two hundred million. And that money is circulating between you, the farmers, the processors, the marketers. Why should you complain of poverty? You will be among the richest young men anywhere in the world. Now we have a market here of close to two hundred million. By the time the next census comes, we'll have the figures. You also have a hundred million Nigerian Africans from West Africa, North, Central Africa, buying food in Nigeria now. If you go to the Leila Market in Sokoto, the Dawano Market in Kano. If you go to the Megatari Market in Jigawa and to the Bama Market before Boko Haram, go and see the number of trucks carrying food from this country to feed other countries, to feed themselves. Because they can no longer grow food, climate change and instability in those countries. So there is money in agric. It wasn't always like this. We have done some things here. We've changed our fertilizer formula for the soils. We've done a soil map. Credit is available from the CBN. We are reforming the Bank of Agric so you can borrow at one digit, the lower end of one digit if we can. And I'm not preaching to you to do something I don't do, I've been in it for sixty years and I enjoy it. Now, so instead of graduating and returning to your house to begin a second childhood, begging your parents for pocket money, recharge cards, shoes and underwears, do something. It's not very comfortable when you start, you will sweat. Some of you may not be used to sweating. It will be challenging initially. But where do you access credit? I've just mentioned. Where do you access land? We're clearing land. What is the market? This place and your neighbors and Western Europe. Just last week, we brought a team from the United Seas to do what they call certification. One of the reasons why Nigerian food cannot be shipped easily is because we have not done a process which Ghana has done called certification and standardization. We'll finish with that in about six months. One tuba of Nigerian yam in the US weighing one and a half kilograms costs fifteen US dollars. I was there just two months ago. When I say these things, I've gone to check them. And I've gone around the farms. I've seen a farmer, a casino, who sold forty, two hundred bags of sorghum for four million. And he was beyond himself, said I have never in my life seen so much money at once. Imagine if you have ten milk cows behind your house, you drink twenty five liters of milk per day. You are a multimillionaire. You don't have to be a fool and need to keep cows. I have, I keep. I planted after graduating from Krikri Prison in nineteen eighty, nineteen, two thousand and five. Because we were detained by the military. So those of you coming to politics, there are many fringe benefits, including imprisonment. When things go wrong, you go to jail. You may not be asked to even defend yourself. So after eight months, I was told you can go home, we found nothing against you. And I served eight months, during which I was not allowed a visit or anything. It's risky, politics is risky. When you hear people talking, politicians will take terrible risks. Death, I've survived three assassination attempts. But somebody has to do it. So there is money in agric. We're mechanizing, we're improving seeds, we're going to support it with land because the final issue, if you don't grow the food with the age of the farmers now at sixty four on the average, you are going to go hungry because you are young. So it's not about feeding Nigeria, it's about also feeding yourselves. The market is big, the fortunes are high. And I assure you, the job of this government, and you hear the President every day when he speaks, agriculture, agriculture, agriculture. Please come on board. Our job is to make sure you can do it more successfully than your parents, even than myself. And as for fruits, yes, Benue has a lot of fruits being wasted. We managed to stop the importation of fruit juice. We're now bringing concentrates and mix with water. But even that costs almost five billion dollars a year, from concentrates for Coca-Cola to the juices. The problem is that accessing credit for importing machinery has become very difficult. For fruit juice, it must be stainless steel, food grade stainless steel. It is not cheap. And government does not want to go into business pretending it can run a factory. So credit lines are coming under BOI and the Bank of Agriculture. For those of you who may be interested in processing food, whereas fruit juice or milk or sugar at one digit interest rate. Of course, the Minister of Power has to give us power and is working hard at it. Then you save yourself the trouble of diesel and generators. But agric is an area which I urge you not to neglect. If this country cannot feed herself, every dream of greatness will come to nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Can I just quickly move to the honorable Minister of Power Works and Housing on the issue of, quote, free prepaid meters? And the overbilling, you know, that is a bit complained of, thank you, sir.
Thank you. I think the, the heart of the question was whether something was being done about supplying prepaid meters and ultimately reducing and ending estimated bills. The answer to that question is yes. But I think that in this business, we are in the business of results. And until you get results, you don't get graded for effort. So we will see the results. But I think it is important again to do some context in order to perhaps help you understand where we are at. Nigeria started the business of electricity in nineteen fifty by the first ordinance, the law. So by two thousand and thirteen, when privatization took place in November, we had run electricity as a government undertaking from beginning to end for sixty three years. Now, in those sixty three years, did everybody have a meter? Hello? So we couldn't meter everybody as government in sixty three years. We have now moved from government-owned to private managed power sector in three years. Is it out of context or within context to expect that what we could not do in sixty three years, we will complete in three years? And I think that, that is it. The point therefore to make is that the power sector in private hands is in transition. It's a three-year transition thus far. We are doing a lot of things and one of the things we are trying to ensure does not happen again is massive importation of meters. Because the more meters we import, the more jobs we take away from you. So we are trying to encourage the local meter manufacturing companies to produce the meters here. And you will have seen on some of my visits to support them. But there are still some components that still technologically are not made here. But we are trying to get support for them to access foreign exchange. Just yesterday, I signed a letter to the Governor of Central Bank supporting the request of the two meter manufacturing companies to access foreign exchange which had been denied to them in trying to import. But that is one half of the story. The other half of the story is also the liquidity issues in the power sector to which I had alluded, which makes it difficult for the discos to access funds to buy meters and supply you. Now, I know that overbilling, estimated billing is a very vexed issue, especially when power supply is not steady. And we have seen that we have more consumer resistance when power is not steady than we do when power is more steady. So it's a problem we are trying to solve. We have tried to share some of these problems with you in a program that Channels TV hosted recently, about a month and a half ago that I appeared on called The Crocs, trying to share information about what is going on between consumers and the distribution companies. Governments in the past had tried a scheme called the Credit Applied Metering Scheme, CAPMEE. But again, we found out that it was breeding a lot of mistrust. Consumers were paying for what they should get as a right, which was a prepaid meter. And even the time they were supposed to receive it was not being met. So it was breeding a lot of mistrust. And we have advised the discos now that your responsibility is to provide the machine that measures the service, which is the meter. So stop passing the burden to your consumers. Their burden is to pay bills for energy consumed. But I think the sense is to understand that we think the opportunities for making and supplying meters should be taken locally, not exported. Because we had lost that opportunity with telephones. We imported hundreds of millions of telephones into this country and created wealth outside Nigeria. I, this administration is determined that that mistake is not repeated in the same way that we are trying to localize our opportunities for consuming what we eat. So bear with us, step by step, but very, very progressively and assuredly, we will reach you in the fullness of time. Thank you.
I, I believe we'll quickly take another round of questions.
Yes.
Then we'll hand up.
Okay, thank you very much. Um. Okay, all right. This side are the favored ones. Okay, the man in black?
Good morning.
Please, the question I've asked before, don't repeat it, please, thank you.
Standing here before you, my name is Aminu Obakor, Obakor from Kuji Area Council Gedeby tribe. So I don't know whether the spokesperson or the aid media and publicity to the President is here, but I want you to please pass this message to the President. Nigerians are hungry, seriously, Nigerians are hungry. Now, without wasting much time, I would have liked to ask all the ministers questions. But let me just limit myself to the ministers' thoughts. Sir, please, you talk about sports, the government, standing here before you, I'm a sports fan. But the impression the ministry and the minister is creating, in fact, is not encouraging at all. The national embarrassment is getting too much. Because we cannot have we cannot have our heroes being treated in a manner which is not very, very proper. Why some other countries do trick these people with so much respect? So please, I believe time will not permit me, seriously, I would have liked to ask all the ministries' questions. And please, I want to also talk to Mister Minister on information. Please, and please, I don't know much about politics, but I want you to also pass this message to Mister President. I believe before he came to power, he has the, the, the youth in mind. But it's as if, once you get to that stage, everything changes. But we want to tell him that if he has changed, twenty nineteen, we are waiting for him. Because you cannot cheat me twice. Thank you very much, sir.
Good day all. I'm Alele Sunny from Gawa Lada, I represent Association of East One Youth. Right now, we have the National Youth Council, which is paraded, we have six presidents parading themselves as the head. And I know there's a bridge in that government because there's nobody representing us that is recognized all over. So we don't know what the Minister of Youth, Minister of Sport and National Youth, Minister of Sport and Youth is doing to reconcile the problem we have in that particular association, in that council. Because we have six people parading themselves and pertaining agriculture in this country, there's a lot to be done. There was in a part program in Sheraton like two weeks ago, talking about rice improvement in Nigeria. Everybody was carried along, no youth was carried along. Importation of rice materials coming to this country, the youth have the power and we are the manpower of this country. So what have we, what had, what is the government doing to enhance this rice production? Jai Ka is doing well from Japan, improving, going for standardization. Now, our youth that we are talking about, the National Youth Council, don't have a national head. And what is our minister going to do to have a credible election for us to have a credible election to produce one national president for the National Youth Council? So that the federal government can recognize us all over. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We will, we will shift from the extreme and come to the middle. Let's hear the voice of a lady, I'm coming to you.
Good morning, sirs. I'm Joy Jaisimi, I work for Vision FM. My question is directed to the Minister of Agriculture. Recently, the spokesperson to the President Garba Shewu said there will be hunger in the land should the continuous export of grains from Nigeria is allowed. And the Minister of Agric said, farmers are actually smiling to the banks because Nigerian grains are being exported in, while Nigerians are actually suffering. Because the price of beans in the market is actually going for four hundred to five hundred naira. While us against two hundred and fifteen naira. What will you do or what is your ministry doing to curtail the massive export of grains from Nigeria? And also to the Minister of Finance, what can we, what is your ministry doing to introduce price control mechanism in this country? Because prices are like, so these are some of my questions.
Thank you very much. We have a former president of, okay.
My name is Ben Dontoye, Executive Director of African Youth Support Center. I want to use this opportunity to commend the honorable ministers for the good job they are doing. And my question is going to be all encompassing as it goes to Minister of Youth and Sport and Honorable Minister for Information. Youth are the future sustainable growth of any nation. And any country that undermines its youth is certainly heading for doom. I strongly believe that in sport, as a country, we don't begin to prepare for Olympics and all these international events, six months, one year, two years before event. six months, one year, two years before event. For example, if you go to the United States, you find out that in every community, there is sport centers. You have a basketball court in almost every neighborhood. That is why you find out that United States is always leading in basketball. So I want to suggest, if it's not in the plan of the ministry, that there should be some kind of youth hub, youth centers in every community where sport development can come up, even from the secondary school level, where we can begin to develop the talent of young people, identify them to save Nigeria from this, uh, uh, close to competition, uh, failure, you know? And, uh, also, my question to the Honorable Minister, or rather advice, is the, the youth of a country are the solution now. It's a very deep one. Everybody want to be a millionaire. We are here today, we hear about agriculture. How many of us will leave this all and have a change of mind? We need general reorientation of young people. That is why I want to commend Mister President for the change initiative which is started. The change begins with me. But, thank you. But the concern is this. The campaign is not deep enough. It is not enough for me to watch the NTA and see the general. It must be taken to the young people. It must be owned by the people. It is not a campaign of the Ministry of Information of Nigeria. It should be a campaign of the youth, of the market women, of the civil servant. It, it is something that has to do with the heart. So I don't know the strategy which the Honorable Minister has to let the campaign come from these young people. I think it's going to really reach. And on the issue of security, beautiful infrastructure is being developed and all of that. What are we doing about young people who are now in high number joining ISIS? Because it's really happening. The Nigerian security, we hear in the newspaper, a lot of young people are being caught, young ladies, 23 years, mobilizing for ISIS. And also in the Niger Delta, what are we doing to ensure that young people shift away from this bad group to be responsible, to protect the infrastructure and all of this that the government is developing? Thank you very much.
Uh, I'm looking for a youth call member. One person. Okay. Make it brief.
Thank you. Um, I want to first of all appreciate, my name is Onokwen Bawashika. I want to first of all appreciate the organizers of this program and for allowing us youth corporates to be part. Because as they say, they say we can national youth service cause them, we're youth corporates. My question goes to the Minister of Agriculture. You said there is money for youths that want to partake in agriculture and the resources are there. Clearing of lands and machineries are available. I want to ask, is there any plan for call members who are interested in these programs? And or do we have to go outside after our service here and then go and kill with other people planning to do something for the, I mean, in the country? Also, my second question goes to the Minister of Labor. There is a, I mean, there's an office called the National Directory of, of, of Plenwa. I want to ask, is there any duty you are currently, um, taking part in or undergoing as an establishment? Thank you.
I, I know we can't take everybody. The hands are many. Uh, this event has a time limit. But I'll take you finally and then we'll go back to the ministers.
Thank you for this wonderful opportunity. My name is Abdul Ahmed. I'm from the Kaduna Consultative Assembly. Uh, my question, all protocol respectfully observed. Uh, question to the Minister of Agri. Sir, I'm very concerned about this genetic, genetic modified crops. Please, can you enlighten us about this? There is a lot of fears about that. Secondly, on Agri, what happened to the idea of one community, one crop or one state, one crop? And finally, to the Agri, the issue I farmed this year, sir, and I know that the fertilizer come in very late. And we had to buy urea for about 10,500 as against 4,000 the government promised us. Please, what will happen in the next rainy season? To the Minister of Sport, sir, I want to ask that, uh, will our girl have to protest before they get their allowances for winning an African Cup? Uh, to the finance, finally, I don't know how to lump this thing up. But if a manufacturer has to import, as, import raw materials, shift it to the factory, pay exorbitantly for diesel, make the production out of market and nearly get a 10% profit. My concern is on the forest, where a man sit at home, get at $1.35 and make a profit of 100%. How do we generate employment on that? Thank you.
Over to you, sir.
Thank you very much. I am not going to repeat the questions. I believe that, uh, every minister was taking notes. And, uh, I, I believe at this point, every minister will bear his own cross. Thank you. Can I start with the Minister of Agriculture, please?
Honorable Minister, thank you again. Thank you all for your questions. Uh, they provoke thought. The young lady asked about the export of food. Asked a very important question. We had a meeting of all the state governors here five, six nights ago. And this matter came up for debate. Should we stop the outsiders buying the grains? There were those who said, yes. The majority said, that does not make economic sense. Because you are telling these farmers to, to grow food. Over the years, they've been growing food, their returns have been very low. So for the first time, they're making money and they're happy. This is the best incentive you can give somebody in any line of business, that there is a market and there is profit. On the other hand, should we allow everything to be taken out? People come from Ghana, all the way to Funtuwa to buy maize. They come from Mali to buy sorghum and millet. We are monitoring. Mister President himself asked us, what do you do? We can't stop that for two reasons. First, you, you belong to ECOWAS, you signed the treaty. If you are going to do that, then actually withdraw from ECOWAS because it is one market now, by law and by treaty. So what's the solution? Government also has to buy as much as possible and store in silos. And we have 33 silos with a capacity of 2 million tons of grain. Before we came in, there was a plan to sell those silos to private sector operators. We have stopped that now. Because if we do, then government will have nowhere to store the grains. Second is to stop waiting for the rainy season to grow, grow food. We should harvest grains every three months. If we do, then we satisfy both the local demand and the export demand. That's the better option. I'm inviting you to go into Agri. And like one young man mentioned, there are not all of you are necessarily going to go into it. It's not easy. Make no mistakes, you sweat. There are, some of you may not like the idea of getting mixed up with grass on the field and sweating and so on and so forth. If it is not profitable, why would you stay there? If you take a loan and you have to repay and the profit margin is too low, you withdraw from there because you say, I, I regret. If you get a loan in that case, some of you may prefer to go and buy a taxi, believing that if you run the taxi, you make money quickly. So we have to strike a balance between viability, national security and profit. And we want you to make profit because if those who export to us are making profit in different countries, why aren't we doing so? Two reasons. Many governments in the world subsidize agriculture. Never mind what they tell our economists. No subsidy in Agri is a lie. Huge lie. They spend a billion euros a day on Agri research and agricultural support. You sit in the U.S. and you hear the government gave 20 billion dollars to groundnut farmers to encourage them. Americans took China to court in February this year, accusing China of spending 100 billion dollars subsidizing farmers in violation of the World Trade Organization rules. But Chinese say, our people must survive, so we subsidize Agri. So when the food comes from outside and looks cheaper, it's not exactly that cheap. So we have to try and grow our own food. As for the hunger issue, government is working hard, storing enough grains to make sure we don't go hungry. But the good news is, another round of grain production is beginning in January through irrigation, especially in the far northern states. And this coming year, we're planning at least 10 lakes or dams in every state or federation to enable us grow food all around. States like Oyo have 22 dams. Not one is being utilized. Not one. Kanu has 23. I was in Ogun a few days ago, there are 12 dams, some not finished. The problem in this country is that for 30 years or, or more, we forgot agriculture. We forgot agriculture. We all became too elitist. I have been in Agri and that's my profession. Never mind the politics and so on, I've been in it. When I tell friends of mine I'm in Agri, they laugh. Ha, ha, ha. He says he's a farmer. I'm telling you this. I arrive at, at, at the airport in the U.S. and bring my passport. And they say, what's your profession? I say, I'm a farmer. Oh, how nice. What do you grow? And I say, I do cashew nuts. Oh, I love cashew nuts. I produce castor oil, wonderful. That ends the conversation, the stamp. If you come in here, and I'm telling you, you the elite, all of us are guilty. As soon as you say you're in agriculture, you are the laughing stock. That's the truth. We have become so arrogant and so indifferent that agriculture is meant for nameless peasants who are there to labor for us so we can buy it cheaply. They too are entitled to life. Finally, fertilizer. Fertilizer came late. You know why? We started moving fertilizer in February. Then National Security Agency said, don't move fertilizer. Over 400 trailers were tied down in Lokoja for two months. Because Boko Haram was converting urea, adding nitric acid to make bombs. It took two and a half months of me rushing to Lokoja, to Natura in Portacot, back to Abuja, back and forth, before we got an arrangement to escort the fertilizers from the factory to the, the farms. Literally, each trailer being escorted by soldiers. Now, we were cut between two insecurity problems. The food insecurity and the Boko Haram insecurity. Some of these things happen in a country, you can't go out on TV and say so because it's very difficult to explain. That's why prices went to 10,000. But for next year, we just signed an agreement with Morocco for phosphate and potassium. Fertilizer prices will fall, by the grace of God, to less than 5,000 naira. The point now is for us to use the railways to deliver. Because again, a trailer from Lagos to Kanu asks for 400,000 naira. And then the trailer falls or disappears. And then, and then you send the SS to look for the driver. And, and, uh, all that doesn't add up. These are the challenges we face because it's a very complicated society too. Now, youth call. We are about to start dialogue with your boss. But a lot depends on which state you come from. Some of the states are responding very quickly, some may be slow. We are clearing land for young people who want to go into Agri because the cost of land clearing is very high. That's why NALDA, the Nigerian Agricultural Land Development Agency, has been resuscitated by law. So we can clear land for you. Take facilities there like water, tractors, machines for harvesting your crops. Uh, you talk of rice. I have planted rice, harvested rice, and I was the first Nigerian to mill rice free of stones. 1986. I'm telling you history, but I couldn't move forward because banks, Nigerian commercial banks simply withdrew from Agri. They will not lend you money. If they do, it's 25%. And at 25%, the only thing you can produce is hemp and cocaine, for which you go to prison. Plain, blunt truth. Until we came now and brought the anchor borrowers program from the CBN, there was simply nowhere for a farmer to borrow money cheaply and produce. Again, they told you deregulate the banks. We did. For 30 years, interest rate in this country has never been lower than 25%. Now whose fault is that? If government has to step in and force banks, you hear an outcry. A deregulated market economy does not force anybody. But we were deceived into this deregulation. What is the interest rate in UK now? 2.5%. What is it in China? 5%. In India, the highest is 6.5%. Here is 25%. How do you survive? Finally, GMO. There was an Englishman called Samuel Johnson, the first man who attempted to write a dictionary. A journalist asked him once, do you believe in ghosts? He said, no, but I fear them. Officially, we don't quite feel comfortable with GMO here yet. And so we are avoiding GMO seeds. We're dealing with hybrids. But there are powerful lobbies selling GMO. There is a national agency for genetic, whatever, that was licensed before we came in. They say there's nothing wrong with GMO. The debate is still very strong. The Europeans are suspicious, the Americans say nothing wrong. Officially and personally, I'm not comfortable with GMO. We'll try and do our best and stick to hybrids. The only problem we have is the quality of seed in the market is so limited. We have three universities of agriculture in this country. Brazil has 70. Our population is almost the same as that of Brazil now. The three universities we have are not concentrating on Agri. Some of you may have graduated from there. Some of them are now teaching management, accounting, law, even medicine. And that's the Nigerian truth. Why can't these universities concentrate on Agri? Give us improved seats, train young men and women who on graduation, graduating from university can go straight to their farms and make money, even own farms on campus. So there's a lot wrong with all of us. We can say in our old age or in our graves that we tried something and it worked. God bless you all.
If, uh, in future, I won't give a farmer politician the microphone without giving time limit. Now, I've learned my lesson. So whether you're a farmer or not, you have only two minutes to sum up. Thank you very much. Finance, please, thank you. Two minutes, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, the questions I was asked were about what we're doing to, um, control prices. Um, of course, as the minister has explained, a lot of the problem with prices are supply and demand issues. Um, a lot of the, the food price increase, two factors really. One is the fact that a lot of our food was imported. So when the naira depreciated against the dollar, of course, the cost of food went up because we import a lot of food, which is what we're trying to correct by going back to agriculture and by improving our, our infrastructure. The other issue is the issue of supply, and I think that's the opportunity. When you see a price that has spiraled out of control, it's because there's not enough supply. And that's what the minister is trying to encourage more people to go into, into those areas. When there's more supply, then obviously the pricing will adjust. But we also don't want the prices to crash. So we want to stabilize the prices. So one of the things we're doing is having the commodity exchanges back so that when a, a farmer goes into a particular area and the price goes up, it doesn't then crash if a lot of people come into it. We should have stable, uh, prices. We should have stable, uh, prices. The other question was about foreign exchange, and it's something that is very valid, and it's something that we have taken up with the central bank, and central bank are promising us that they will address this issue of arbitrage, where people can get dollars at three oh five, sell it the same day at four fifty or four eighty and make a fortune. There's no other business you can do where you can take thirty million naira one day and get forty-five the next day. So it's a disincentive for people to actually be productive, and we think it's damaging the economy. But the central bank have promised us that they're looking into it and are going to come up with solutions to end this black market. Because the truth is, if you actually look at the fundamentals of the naira against the dollar, look at our oil production, there is no way that the black market should be at the price it's at. It is speculators that are driving it, creating scarcity, creating fear. People are rushing to buy dollars and they are the ones profiting. So I think there are two things. I don't think people should be hoarding dollars. If you don't need dollars, don't allow people to sell us this idea that, ah, dollar is going higher and higher, a lot of people are jumping into dollars, they don't even know why. And we've seen it before, where those who actually want to profit from something are the ones spreading, um, these rumors so that they can profit from it. So I think that there are two issues. One is that we shouldn't, uh, respond to that panic. But two is clearly the central bank have said they're going to do something about this arbitrage that is going on, that is really making, uh, even, nobody will manufacture, really. Even if you get the dollars at three oh five, you will not do what you're meant to do with it because the temptation is there to quickly sell the dollars and make a big profit. So it's something we are going to address because we believe it's really, uh, damaging the economy. Thank you.
Honorable Minister of Sports, please, thank you.
Build the youth. Build the youth. It does appear that, uh, maybe all of us are like the Minister of, uh, Power, who said he is fifty-three. Well, I think, um, the youth question has been on the front burner of this administration. And one of the young people said Nigerians are hungry, and that's the truth. Nigerians are hungry. And we, in government, we know Nigerians are hungry, but we will work and ensure that Nigerians will no more be hungry. One of the questions has to do with, um, the national embarrassment we have had in sports. It's, it's just unfortunate that, um, we have to go through that situation. But I think the assurance I will give Nigerians is that we learn from our mistakes. We will definitely have to in future take steps to ensure that things that will always subject our national image to embarrassment will be avoided. Now, as a ministry, we will take a careful look at the events and ensure that while planning in the future, we take proper steps to address some of these lapses. Then the issue of, um, whether the, uh, the president before election loves the youth and the people, whether he still do up till now. And the assurance here is that the president is the man of the people and he will continue to be the man of the people. The challenges we have today as a country does not exclude him and isolate him from being who he is. He will remain, the president will know, he will remain, the father figure will know, and he will continue to work for this country together with his cabinet and people in his government. Then the issue of the National Youth Council of Nigeria with multiple leadership. Uh, it is also unfortunate that, um, the only umbrella organization where the aspirations of Nigerian youth could be expressed has been bedeviled by crisis for so many years. And, uh, the crisis of leadership has degenerated so much that, uh, we are in court with ourselves. And there are so many court orders from the courts in respect of the leadership of the Youth Council. But I do know that, um, when we were active members of the National Youth Council of Nigeria, we had mechanisms with which we resolve our differences among ourselves as young people. But what I realized as the problem that has made the youth unable to resolve their differences is the interferences and the manipulation of people who are outside the youth bracket of youth. Those who are involved in promoting the crisis and the division among the young people are not themselves youth. And this has been one of the major challenges of youth development in Nigeria. There was a time in this country that the youth leader of a political party was sixty-two years old. Now, going by that particular standard, myself would require ten more years or less than that to be qualified to be a youth. Now, the idea of moving the definition of who is a youth from one point to the other is one of the major challenges that is generating some of this youth crisis, and we must address it. The National Youth Council define a young person or a youth as somebody who falls within the ages of eighteen to thirty-five. When we graduated above thirty-five, there was a ceremony of pulling out. Where, where we were pulled out and we remain youth veterans. But these things no more operate within the structure of the Youth Council. And so you have politicians coming in, hijacking the entire leadership of youth and manipulating them for their own interest. What can we do? Well, in an attempt even to try to reconcile the different leadership, we have had so many challenges because, uh, in one of the attempts, I was taken to court as trying to disobey a court order. Why will I interfere with an issue that has gone to court and has, has been decided? And so I think the best we can do for now, as we are planning in the ministry, is sometimes next year, we are going to hold a youth stakeholders meeting. We invite all the young people together, discuss, agree and take a final decision as to what will happen to the issue of the youth leadership. That will also put to rest all these multiple leaderships that we have parading, uh, the, the streets as presidents of, uh, the National Youth Council of Nigeria. Then the last question is whether we shall continue to, the girls will continue to protest in future to get their rights. I think even, um, getting to the level of the protest itself was not too good enough. But then it's a systemic, uh, problem with governance in, uh, sports administration, which, taking a clear look at the situation, we have decided to embark on reforms. Set of, uh, National Sports Reform Committee, they have, uh, submitted their report, we've received the report, and, um, from the report, what we've gotten from it is, we need a developmental sports model, uh, different from what we have now, which is the servicing sports model. And the, the servicing sports model is this sports model where we, grassroots sports development is completely abandoned. And, uh, when we have tournaments or competition, we go around the world looking for professionals to come, they compete for Nigeria. If they win, we celebrate them. If they lose, they leave. Now, that has been what we have been doing year in, year out. In other words, we have the top to bottom, bottom approach to sports development, but we are trying to look at it from the bottom to top development, where we will encourage, where we will encourage, um, grassroots sports development. We put more money in identification of talent, encouraging talents, developing them so that they can be elite, uh, elite, uh, sportsmen in future. So I think if we are able to do this successfully, we will address the problem of most of this embarrassment we have, where federations will only be interested in getting already met professionals who are living mostly outside the country, bring them to compete, we pay them, they go. If we continue with this, then we will be destroying sport. We're also thinking of, uh, uh, returning institutional sports. Because when we were young, there were schools first where we compete, in, in secondary schools, there were inter-schools competition. Some of these things no more exist. Then the issue of the National Youth Games and the National Sports Festival. For the National Youth Games, it was abandoned for so many years, but we held it this year and we had, uh, so far identified about one thousand talents from their young people, who we intend now, uh, in the next year, present them to the various federations for training and retraining to prepare our package for twenty twenty, uh, Olympics. Then the National Sports Festival, uh, had also suffered the same fate, but we intend to hold the National Sports Festival, come, go, swimming, uh, first quarter of twenty seventeen or second quarter, if Kalaba, which has the hosting right, is unable to continue. So I think, um, the, the youth needs some form of reorientation, like it is argued, but then they must themselves be involved in the process. It shouldn't look like what happened with Africa when, um, the whites in eighteen eighty-five met to disco, discuss the future of Africa without an African representative. Youth development, uh, cannot be done in isolation of the young people themselves. They must be involved, they must be engaged, they must be part of it. Otherwise, they will remain strangers to what we are doing today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. I don't think I'm very effective at all. I'm not able to intimidate them. I tried to ask him to stop, he ignored me. What can I do? Uh, Honorable Minister of, uh, hey, uh, Paul, just the national planning, please, quickly. Thank you.
And I was supposed to be advising him and compelling him to calm down and to slow down and to minimize the term, but he wasn't listening to me as well. But I think it's good. He said a lot of very good things. Well, from the point of view of, uh, the Minister of Budget and National Planning, we are taking measures to ensure that this country comes out of recession.
Uh, but I want to say that, um, the kid who is with me is real, and, um, I, I want to read this post on Facebook this morning, yesterday.